Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. I'll call to order the March 19th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. And I'm going to begin with recognizing the passing of Diane Coombs with a moment of silence. And I just, Erica put together a list of all the boards and committees she's served on, and hopefully we didn't miss any, but Select Board, Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Board, and the Harbor Plan Implementation back in 2009. So years of dedication to the community. So if we could have a moment of silence.
Can I just say, and I remember when I was, I think I was still baking down at The Skipper, and she and her husband owned the, they owned a fish store where Henry Jr. is now. And I was delivering some of my first wholesale bread to them way, way back. So it's a long time.
Okay, so I'll have a moment of silence. Okay. We will accept the agenda as printed in the packet, and we'll move to announcements. Libby?
This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have a townwide informational session coming up on the proposed new Our Island Home project, next Thursday, March 27th, at 5:30. It'll be here in this room, also online. If people would like to know more about this project, we encourage you to attend that session. We also have some open houses that are scheduled in connection with the new Department of Public Works proposal. We are seeking design funds at the annual town meeting. And open houses will be held on April 5th and April 19th. More information is online, and also there's a link on this Select Board agenda. The master plan has a two-part visioning program event coming up. The PLUS Department is inviting residents to this visioning program on April 4th and 5th, that's a Friday and a Saturday, to help shape Nantucket's future. And more online for that, and that's it.
Okay, thanks, Libby. Any Select Board announcements or comments? Okay. We don't have any responses to public comment questions this week. Now it's time for public comment. And I see Cliff getting up to the mic.
Purchase or try to purchase another piece of land down the street for $6.4 million for affordable housing. Is there any place I can look up how we go about that, what guidelines we use for square footage, or how we determine what's a good deal, what's not a good deal as far as purchasing land for that reason?
We'll respond.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to take Megan Perry online, and then Caroline, you'll be up next.
Thanks, Brooke. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. I just wanted to give a huge shout out to our local ZBA. If anybody would like to see what it looks like to see a board who truly cares about our entire community and the health, safety, and welfare of our community, watching their deliberations today really shows it. If you want to see a board with a backbone that's willing to stand up for our community, just look at our local ZBA. It has become very clear that it looks like a five-to-zero denial of surfside crossing. And they are in the process of drafting their denial and decision on that. And along those lines, I am hoping that the various boards and people who in the past have tried to, let's say, undermine the ZBA or not really stay in their lane with regards to this project, will choose to stay in their lane and not undermine the ZBA again for this go-around. So again, huge shout out to the ZBA for all their time and effort that they have donated to the community. They have done a phenomenal job, and I look forward to reading their denial decision. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan. Caroline?
Thank you, Caroline Balzer. I just wanted to bring up, I had been a, I was subpoenaed to be a witness in the Ward trial in Jaum, February. And I heard there in the judge's closing arguments, something very important for the voters. And I don't know if that's gotten relayed via the media or KP Law. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to get it across, if I may. Judge Vey was very clear in his admonishment of the voters of Nantucket for not having, taking care of our zoning business by creating a permitted use for the customary use that was clearly evidenced in the case. I sat through all three days of the case, and I heard what was said. Especially in light of South Lake Taco, Tahoe's recent overturning of their STR ban from 2018. I think that happened last week through a class action lawsuit because it violated the Interstate Commerce Clause. So that's going to cost Lake Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe, a lot of money when they are sued for damages. So in light of those things, and the judge saying clearly to KP Law's attorney Braun, if he feels that the voters of Nantucket again cannot take care of their zoning loophole and clean up the housekeeping related to it, that he will take the legislative responsibility away from Nantucket voters. And as somebody who's on the Town Council Study Committee, who's been looking at this for a long time as a citizen, I am, that is a very serious comment that he is making. And he did not, he did not mean sunny words. So Attorney Braun assured him that we would get it done this town meeting. And as I understand it, I am the article sponsor for 66, which is, as I understand it, the article that would take care of that zoning loophole, not the other ones. And therefore, I feel strongly, not only as the sponsor, but having listened to what Judge Vey said to the voters, that we need great clarity around the issue. It's been very convoluted and confusing for all of us, even our moderator last year. And so I really am asking the town to help with clear messaging. I know it's too late to ask for your support for that article, and by taking it on as a town article.
Okay, Caroline, that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, we now have Oscar off music for the end of the timer. New feature, NCTV. Much more obvious than the little ringer we had before. Okay, I'm going to take Campbell Sutton online, and then Amy at the mic.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking my comment tonight.
Go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to address the DPW Hunting Association presentation that was given maybe last week or the week before, probably the week before because I'd wanted to comment and wasn't able to make public comment last week. So I really, as everyone knows, I'm a supporter of the Chad Bush move for the DPW. And I really, really appreciated the effort the Hunting Association had gone through in their design. I think it's lovely. It ticks a lot of boxes for the people who would potentially vote against it because of the detail with which they're going to be collecting shells, et cetera, et cetera. Everyone heard that. The one thing I am a bit disappointed on, or wanted to put out there anyway, you know, bright and shiny is wonderful for new buildings. But I was thinking, you know, why don't we try and utilize some house that's going to be moved, maybe a two-story house, as an administrative building? Maybe the school trailer that's now used as a meeting trailer. Maybe that could become like the workers' lounge with lockers and things like that. Just trying to, you know, think a little bit fiscally, conservatively, about how we might utilize some of what we have to achieve our needs without a $100 million price tag on it. And that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Campbell. Amy?
Sorry, Erica.
Thank you.
Okay. Amy Eldredge, just a quick question. When you guys go to discuss Pleasant Street, will there be comment?
Yes.
In that? Okay, great. Thank you.
And then online, Robert Bates?
Good evening.
Hi.
The reason I'm...
Sorry, that was me.
Will we start the clock?
Sorry, Bob, that was me.
No problem. The reason I'm checking in is a few weeks back, our state representatives were there, and they point-blank said that they were working with DOT, Registry, or whoever it is that's responsible for the inspection station concerns and improving that ability, said they would give a workaround coming, or help coming. I called Don Allen a week or so ago, looking to see if we could make inspections and sticker appointments yet. Was told no, and that it will not be happening. So I now have all of my vehicles that, no matter what I do, I can't get inspected because I go out there and there's always a "end of line" sign on there, so you can't get in line. I think there's more than, I'm not the only person running around out here with that situation. I'm wondering if the town or the state, are they going to actually do anything for us, or are we swinging in the wind out here? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, not seeing anyone else rising to the mic, and no more hands online. We will move on from public comment. We don't have any new business. Next up is approval of minutes, payroll warrants, and treasury warrants. Do I have a motion?
One, I had one minor correction that said "nothing" instead of noting, and I sent that to Erica, so I'll move approval.
That was in the March 10th minutes.
Yeah, in the March 10th. It was a minor.
Correction.
And if it doesn't get, if it doesn't get changed, it's not the end of the world, but...
Okay, so is that a motion with that correction?
With that correction, yes.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Citizen and departmental committee requests and reports. We are doing the applicant introduction and review of applications and appointments to the African Meeting House Investigation Procurement Work Group. Okay, so I wanted to do a little clarification upfront. And the charge of this work group will be limited to the selection of a vendor to execute a review of the investigation that was done around the African Meeting House incident crime. It is not a reinvestigation of the crime. It is a review of how the investigation was performed. And I wanted to be clear to the public that that is the distinction, and that this group's purview is solely to determine, to make a recommendation to the Select Board as to who will perform that review. So it's not, it's not hiring someone to reinvestigate the incident. It is hiring a firm to review the investigation that happened. And should there be anything that comes out of that review that the Select Board should, need to address, we'll do that at the time. But we're going to walk this process through. So this is the procurement process for a vendor to do the review. So pursuant to our regular appointment process, we have had the names of the applicants in the packet for three meetings. And that is, gives the community the opportunity to submit comments or in support of, or concerns about applicants. And I just wanted to point to the fact that there are letters in the packet. They've been updated, sort of, they've been flowing in last minute. So the updated packet as of today has a number of letters. We're not going to review those letters, which is, our normal practice is not to review those letters, but they are input that the board has in our deliberations, or selection, or how we vote on the applicants. So one process question I have, did we formally create this work group, Libby and Erica? Do you recall, or do we need to do that tonight?
No, I believe you already did that when we reviewed the mission. And that's how we were able to then advertise for it.
Okay, so what will happen tonight is, our first step will be to appoint the designated members by acclamation. And that is Cliff Williams as the appointed representative of the group that had the Citizen Warren article that started this process, Dr. Noel Trent from the Museum of African-American History, and Malcolm McNabb as the Select Board member who will chair the group. So if I could have a motion to appoint those three by...
So moved?
Do it a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, pursuant to our standard application process, we have four applicants who have submitted information and requested to be considered for appointment to the two at-large community seats on the work group. And our process is that those folks are invited to speak for a few minutes and present their reasons for wanting to serve, background, anything that would support their application. And Abby, because she has a baby, to attend, asked to go first tonight, so I'm going to have her do that. So Juliette can go home and go to bed.
Thank you, and sorry if the baby yells, so you guys understand. I put my name in because I...
Abby, just state your full name for the record.
I'm Abby DeMolina. And I put my name in for this group because I believe it's really important to follow this process through with the investigation, and to obviously find an impartial group to do the investigation as we've been charged with. And I put my name in also. I wanted to make sure that there were people to choose from, so I will not be offended if you don't choose me. I just personally, I've gone to events at the African Meeting House. I think it's really important to make sure this piece of preservation is considered and that, you know, we do a thorough process. And I would just like to say, like I said, I won't be offended if you don't choose me, but I would really urge you to choose Rocky as one of the other members. I think it's really important to have someone as a member of the community be a part of this process. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Abby. Rocky, did you want to come on down?
Thank you, Manager Anthony Rocky Fox, and fellow board members. I'm here tonight because I feel as though my character has been called into question. And for those of you who know me, to get up here and speak about myself is tough. But I feel as though I have to do that. When I showed that letter to my kids, they made sure that I was here tonight to defend my character in their name. I've been appointed to three other committees by the board. I'm on the Council on Aging. I'm on the Scholarship Committee. And I'm on the Commission on Disability. And there's never been a question about my character. Also, the business that was called into question, in the 25 years that we've owned it, has raised upwards of $1 million for this community. My character has never been in question. I sit on the Hospital Advisory Council. I was just elected to the Dreamland Board of Directors. I've been a volunteer at the Nantucket Elementary School for 20 years. I've delivered meals on wheels for 20 years. And not once has my character been called into question. I too want closure. And I think that it would be nice to have someone who looks like me on this committee for optics alone. And the people that I reached out to into the community wanted to all come tonight, but I just stayed at home and listened. But I can't think, and I'm a little disappointed that I'm the only person of color from Nantucket up here, to be honest with you, if I was being honest. But there was a letter in the current a while back about people, minority people, not stepping up to join boards, to join committees. And I think that if I wasn't a viable candidate for this committee, what kind of message is that going to send to anyone else who wants to join a board or committee? Thank you.
Thanks, Rocky. Brooke?
Afternoon. Brooke Gibbs. My family's been a part of the Cape Verdean community on Nantucket for as long as they've been here. My family helped build that building. My family, they buried the colored people on their land. And to me, that's the most important thing that needs to happen here right now, is for them to have justice. And that's why I'm, I put myself forward for it. Okay? And I actually, I second Rocky's nomination. If not, if I bow out for Rocky to have a spot.
Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yep. And did you hear from Luke?
No, our fourth applicant, Luke Thornwell. I don't see him in the audience, and I don't see him online.
Oh, okay, so he's coaching tennis, so... Okay, so thank you to everybody for your words about yourselves. So we will now go to a vote. And Erica, do you want to just remind us of the process?
Sure, so all the Select Board members have pieces of paper in front of them. They're going to vote by paper ballot. They will pass their votes to me. I will read them out. The two candidates with the most votes will be appointed to the work group. Okay, the votes are as follows. Chair Moore gave her votes to Rocky Fox and Luke Thornwell. Mr. Dixon, Abby DeMolina and Rocky Fox. Mr. Fee, Brooke Gibbs and Rocky Fox. Ms. Holgate, Abby DeMolina and Rocky Fox. Dr. McNabb, Rocky Fox and Luke Thornwell. Rocky has five. That's unanimous. And then you have two ties. Both Abby and Luke got two votes. So we're going to need to do another vote between the two of them, please.
Luke, I see you're online. We're already in the process of voting. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Ms. Moore, oh, sorry, Chair Moore. Luke, Mr. Dixon, Abby, Mr. Fee, Luke, Ms. Holgate, Luke, Dr. McNabb, Luke. So that's four votes for Luke and one for Abby. So we have Rocky Fox and Luke Thornwell.
As always, thanks to everybody who applied. And Luke, there you go. You have been appointed. Thank you for offering your service. And Rocky, thank you very much as well. So what will happen now is, Dr. McNabb will work with town staff to coordinate a meeting schedule based on availability of tech resources, time, et cetera. Dr. Trent is in Boston, so I expect these meetings will be Zoom-only. And as a reminder, they will be recorded and available to be reviewed online on the town's YouTube page as well.
We're hybrid.
Yep.
We're hybrid.
We're hybrid, yeah. So thanks to everybody, and I'm very much looking forward to the outcome of this and the recommendation that comes to us for a firm to do the review. Okay. Next up is Nantucket Public Schools' request for authorization to utilize funds in Special Education Reserve Fund to cover out-of-district tuition expenses outside the operating budget for tuition expenses of the school. Who is going to take the lead? Beth, do you want to take the lead, or, oh, wait, Beth, you don't look like Martin.
I think it's because I'm piggybacking on his link. But Martin will be handling this. I'll be here for questions if needed.
Okay, thank you very much. Martin?
Good evening, everyone. So the past several years have been very challenging for us for special education tuitions. Throughout the state of Massachusetts, there have been increases. It started a little after COVID. Actually, during COVID 2020, 2020 was the first year. And then since then, we've seen, on average, probably about 7% to 8% increases every year on tuitions. As of today, we have 11 students that are out of district, and we cover anywhere between $109,000 to $322,000 of tuition for those students that have to go out of district. The location of Nantucket obviously predisposes us for having a little higher expenses than the mainland because we cannot co-share either with collaboratives or anywhere with other school districts. We are 100% responsible for those expenses. So last year, we ended up with a deficit of close to $756,000. As we have shared numerous times throughout last year's budgetary process, we did have throughout the year, on average, about 11 vacancies. So those savings helped us bridge that gap. This year, we are almost fully staffed. I believe as of today, we have two positions available. And we have already a deficit of $747,000. It's been an uphill battle to keep up with tuition rates. Next year, budget addresses, to an extent, this, we have increased our budget, and we're also getting a reimbursement from the Circuit Breaker that is higher than we usually get. Just as a side note, Circuit Breaker comes separately. That's a state reimbursement for the costs we incur for these out-of-district students this year. It was $540,000 last year, actually, and this year, that we're going to use next year, is going to be close to $810,000 to $30,000. So that's significant increase, and we're hopeful that in the future, that gap will close. But as we stand today, I don't, we spoke with Superintendent Hallett and the Special Education Director, Deb Gately, and we decided that it's prudent to go into the SPED reserve account, which was established with Article 32 in the 2018 annual town meeting. And we have right now a fund balance of $700,000 there. This leaves a $250,000 balance that we might need to use in the future. But I'm hopeful that next year's budget will come much closer to what the actual expenses for out-of-district tuition are. This year, though, like I said, it's been challenging, so that's our request. We presented and got the approval from the school committee at their meeting last night. So because an expenditure from a reserve account such as this requires two votes, we are here today to present to the Select Board and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Any questions from the board? Motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Beth, take care. Beth, take care. Okay. Town managers' report.
No report tonight.
Select Board reports and comments. Discussion possible vote to conclude the Pleasant Street One Way Pilot Program. So Dawn, do you want to start out? You asked for this.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we went over it pretty well last week. There's been a lot of complaints for a very quiet period of March. And then on top of it, to have Atlantic closed at the same time, I think was, was not the best planning. It wasn't something that was completely, I knew that Atlantic would be closed. I didn't realize they were going to be closed at the same time when we approved this. And I just think in general, we're prolonging the inevitable, where we really need to get going on getting the necessary easements and moving of encroachments and so forth to get a sidewalk on the street. And it's just, it's been a safety hazard for a really long time. And I'm just, I believe that the street has to remain two ways unless there's very significant traffic improvements done elsewhere.
Thanks, Dawn. Anyone else from the board want to weigh in on it? I did promise to take public comment, so I'll let the board speak first. Malcolm, did you?
No. Madam Chair, I'm interested in the public comments. She makes good points.
Yep. Okay. Curtis?
Curtis Barnes, thank you. I've been watching this ever since its inception, and I have never seen anyone walking in the reserved area, except today, I saw someone, but he was walking on the sidewalk that already exists for about half of the distance. So I think the idea to pursue an easement and continue the sidewalk would be fine. But please, let's end this experiment. It is causing traffic problems at Five Corners, at Surfside, and Sparks. We all know that. And as the summer comes along, it's only going to get worse. So it's time to make it back two-way. And hopefully, when the asphalt plant opens, we can pave it because it's tearing the heck out of the cars going over that rough concrete right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Amy?
Amy Eldridge, and I just want to agree with Dawn. I think it needs to go. I installed the dash cam in my car two weeks ago, and on my way to a funeral service on Saturday, I actually had to dodge a car driving the wrong way down and pulling into the inlets between the sawhorses. So it had people at a standstill on Pleasant Street. So it really needs to come out. The sidewalk needs to go in. And two days last week before I had my dash cam put in, there was a red pickup truck parked just past, I guess it would be Camellia Lane, in the lane. And then there's a house under construction in that development that runs alongside Williams Lane. They had to park in the bike lane because they've got work trucks in that road. So it doesn't do anything, and if you don't have anybody watching it, people are just going to do whatever they want. And I just think that it was a really poor setup. I think the sawhorses didn't really help. And I know there was do not enter signs on every section of those sawhorses, but it's very clear that people don't care, and it's just a traffic nightmare. And I run a Facebook group, and today, Red, where a Islander was like, I don't stop at the stop sign anymore now because I don't have to look at traffic coming out of Pleasant Street in front of Outdoor Power. I mean, it's just ridiculous. It just needs to go. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Okay.
I'll make a quick comment.
Go ahead, Matt.
I, I would have said, I wouldn't, didn't believe you, except I just had a car drive toward me on that street. I would have said, no, there's no way that could happen, but it just happened on my way here.
I got video.
I know. I, I'm just, I'm sort of joking, but, but it, yeah, so I was shocked. I'm like, what are they doing? You know? So, anyway.
Okay. So this came up last week because we had contract impending contracts that we waived, we did not approve it, for further traffic study in this location. And then, Dawn, we were sort of talking about the advisability of spending that money versus calling it a day on this. So the pleasure of the board on this at this point?
Make a motion to, I'll accept Dawn's, whatever. What is, it's a motion to stop.
Motion to discontinue the pilot program. And then can we circle back to deciding whether we're doing a sidewalk or a bike path and move forward? So I think, I guess we probably need it on another agenda.
Okay. Is that clear, Erica?
Motion to discontinue the pilot program, I'm assuming effective immediately, and circle back on how to proceed with a?
Yeah, there were two proposals. One was a more traditional sidewalk, and one was a bike lane that was going to take up more space.
Okay. Great. So the other options, not this one.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom?
I'd just also note that Mr. Gosparo sent a letter in late this afternoon that had some points about some potential encroachments that I'm sure is already being looked at, but.
Which traffic safety had asked for those to be cleared for the last summer.
I would add that to the motion that they move forward with the process of removing the encroachments.
Is that okay with you, Matt?
That's okay.
Okay. As a friendly amendment, okay. All right. We ready for a vote?
Sorry, did you second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
It was regarding just something, I want to just put it out there real quick, what Mr. Barnes said about paving. That road is on schedule to be paved. It's just a question of when. We have multiple competing projects waiting for paving. As soon as the asphalt plant comes in, the Mass DOT has the Milestone Pulpice Road Project. We have the Third Sumer Force Main. Pleasant Street is part of the C-Mom Project. CC Construction is waiting to pave, to finish out the water project west of the airport. There's stuff ensconced. The list is long. Everybody's waiting, and everybody wants to be first in line. So we appreciate everybody's patience.
I was just going to say, it sounds like a plea for patience.
One other, one other comment. I was, I, as we're adding 200 cars a year at peak, give or take, there's going to be more cars filling more roads. It's just, in my mind, it's a math equation. And so, so I know that this was, we're against this, you know, people are against this, but I look at it, and I, and I, in my head, I say, okay, well, when it gets busier and there's two-way traffic on Atlantic, you know, there's more two-way there, and more two-way on Pleasant's already pretty full. You're not going to get any more there, sort of town-bound most of the time. You might be able to get a little bit more the other direction. But I look at that, and I know back in some of the Mid-Island area plans, there was one way with more parking and a circulation. At some point, we should be willing, as a community, to look at that, even the people that live there, because then they're only going to have traffic backed up one direction. You know, they're going to have traffic backed up both directions pretty soon, and they're not going to be able to get in and out of their, out of their parking, out of their driveways. You know, it might be a little easier someday if we do make some of these one-way, like we've done downtown. So I think, you know, that's a plea to, you know, when Mike comes with his traffic studies and, you know, and shows us how that'll work, we, I hope that people are a little more willing to think about it at that point. So, thank you.
Dawn?
I, I just wanted to follow up on that because I had said earlier that it just, it needs to go along with other things if we're going to make a move like this. It can't just be that one section. It's just not functional.
Yeah. No, and that's, yeah, if we try, if we model the traffic and it works better, you know, for the neighborhood and for the flow of traffic, we should be doing that. But I think we weren't quite there yet, so.
So I'm going to say the really bad R-word. The original plan for this included the roundabout at, at the school by the big tree to move cars through Atlantic Avenue, through that intersection more efficiently. It was all meant to be sort of together. So I just want to put that out there. That's what we all mean by improving traffic flow in the, in the area. It is, it's all tied. So we don't need to debate that tonight, but.
I will talk about that later. I have, I have comments about that later already. So thank you.
Anyway, these are the tough decisions. Okay. We're good on that? Okay. Next up is preliminary review of a select board comments for the annual town meeting warrant. We did meet as, in a joint meeting with planning and the finance committee, as we do every year, and had a preliminary, like, walked through item by item by item in that joint meeting. So I'm not going to do the same tonight, and I, what I want to do is invite the board to identify articles that they think we should consider adding select board comments. And we will, we need to finalize that next week. So this is preliminary.
I'll, I'll say, I think we, I think the board should consider comments on short-term rental articles. I believe that 66, 67, 68, do we believe, you know, in one of them, all of them, none of them? I, I think that we should consider having that. I asked the, during the planning board when we had the joint meeting, and they are strongly in favor of 66. But there's, a couple of them come out saying they thought 67 wasn't so bad, but they don't want to support that because they want 66. Is that, you know, so I think we, as a board, you know, maybe might want to step in and give some direction on that. I also think, you know, the South Lake Tahoe is something that did happen. It's a, it was a, they struck a permanent residential exemption from the South Lake Tahoe area, but I, and so they struck that whole, that part of it for that reason. It was an area that was a residential area that was already capped at 1,400 short-term rentals, and they were trying to put further restrictions on it. And so, you know, I do think, I'm not sure. I know that when we were doing the short-term rental work group last year, we were trying to make sure that, you know, that residents and non-residents were treated equally because of the Commerce Clause, and I think we did a pretty good job of that. To be honest, I haven't really dug into the, you know, 67, 68 to see if they don't comply or don't comply, but that would be something I think Town Council should advise us on. I, I think they're okay, but he should advise us on those. Thank you.
Okay, Matt. So do you, do you want to recommend a comment, or just, do you want to talk about it more? Like, like, we're?
Sorry. If you're going to get into making a comment, I should recuse on short-term rentals specifically.
Yeah. Since we're on that topic, why don't we do that? Dawn, thank you for reminding me.
Just stay on this, and I'll come back.
We'll come back after we get done with this. So I, you know, I don't know if that's a direction you want to take, or just a general comment, or?
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking what other people think about the other articles. Are you all, you know, lockstep with the planning board, 66 or nothing? Or are you, is the board, I'm asking for a conversation. Is the board, you know, if 66 does not pass, is the board in favor of the other articles? And should we part our weight behind any of them at all? I'm asking for what people think. I know what I think, but I don't know what other people think.
Okay. Anyone want to weigh in?
Well, Madam Chair, if we're not going to finalize this till next week, I think Matt makes a good point. I need to think about it.
Okay.
I need to do my homework a little better than I have.
Okay. Fair enough. I'm willing to stick my neck out a little bit here and say that I supported the outcome of the short-term rental work group, which was a combination of codification and zoning with regulation in the general bylaw. And I don't think any combination of the articles we have before us is effective in that combination. There's a part of me that says, should it be codified, then the incentive to regulate and, you know, to come to consensus on regulation, the incentive for that will be there. I wish it were hand in hand, but clearly, we've been at this a lot. And, you know, I think the other articles, one of them really attempts to do zoning in the general bylaw, which I think Town Council weighed in on, and I can't remember which number it was. But I do not favor monitoring of use. I don't think it's enforceable, and I don't think it's a good strategy in general for how to manage short-term rentals, just as a theory or as a, as a direction. So with the, sort of the soup we have before us this, this year or this meeting, I'm sort of between, because what's happening in the, in the Ward case, you know, if, if we take, if Judge Vey acts on his frustration that we've tried this and not come to consensus as a community, and that he's going to take, really take matters in judicial hands, I don't know. That's, that's a risk if we don't, if we don't pass Article 66. So that's kind of where I'm at, but I'm not ready to finalize anything yet.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I would agree that with what you said before, which is what Chair Iverson of Planning Board has said many times, including going back to the short-term rental work group, which is codify and zoning and regulate, regulate in general bylaw. It's just that town meeting was not able to agree on what those regulations would be, and the codification part is, has turned out to be too controversial as a standalone. It's been, in some iteration, attempted several times now. And it may be different this town meeting, but my gut tells me it won't be. And I think that the, the folks who are on the, let's just say, the other side to make it tidy, are going to come out and force against that because of the reasons they've stated many, many times. So I think we're kind of stuck with a legal limbo for, for folks and kind of what regulations make sense. And because this issue is so complicated, and it's got everything from housing and affordable, it has really nothing to do with affordable housing, but it's, it's all kind of jumbled together in people's minds on this issue. And it's, we've taken several stabs at it with our article and the short-term rental work group subgroup that myself and Malcolm led up. And I thought we had a good, a really good start with the short-term rental work group, but town meeting thought otherwise. So I, these are citizens' warrant articles, and I believe it is our, our standard to not make, do outreach on citizen warrant articles. So I think if we were going to take one or more of these and create an article, that it should be either from us and, and/or the planning board again. And, and we should try that at a subsequent town meeting. But that's a lot of bandwidth, that there's so many issues going on and other things. And for, for, for us and town staff and other boards to go through all that and to simply have it fail by, you know, X percentage like it did last time, I'm not sure is a good use, the best, excuse me, the best use of time at the moment. So I, I'm open to whatever my colleagues want to suggest, but at, at this time, I don't, I think that citizen warrant articles are themselves, and they, they semi-standalone on their merits, and we'll see what happens in town meeting.
John Georgio wants to chime in.
Yeah, I was going to ask him a question, but let him go first.
We let him go, and then you can ask him. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, John.
Good evening, everyone. So there is actually some late-breaking news that I just received. Judge Vey today did issue an order in which he's asked the parties for further briefing on the, on the issues that were litigated at the trial. I haven't had an opportunity to really review the order in detail. I will get a copy to you all. But we're going to have to analyze that order to see what clues might be embedded in terms of how Judge Vey, it may be a predictor about how he's going to rule. I do think it's important, as I've said literally from day one, that it's much better for the town to sort of control its own destiny rather than put the decision in the hands of a judge. And I appreciate everything, all the comments from the select board, but I think if, if a, if the zoning issue is not resolved at this town meeting, I don't think that's going to bode well for the town in litigation. And that's a pure prediction on my part, but I am very concerned about that. So I'm going to send you Judge Vey. So I'm going to send you Judge Vey's order today. We will get you a memorandum about, and I think we'll do that on a confidential basis because this is in litigation. But I want the board to be fully apprised of the potential risks of not adopting a zoning bylaw at this upcoming town meeting in terms of local control of this issue.
Thanks, John. Matt, did you want to follow up with a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about Article 66. I'm not worried about from the South Tahoe perspective, but 67, was, is there, do we, John, do we have concerns about commerce clause and treating people the same in Article 67 that Fritz has put forth? I think he's treating everyone as 30 days, right?
Yes. So Matt, you raise an excellent question. And notwithstanding the Lake Tahoe decision, the courts have, depending upon what circuit we're talking about, the courts have, you know, had different views of how the commerce clause may impact short-term rental regulations. When I, when I reviewed these, it looked to me that a strong argument could be made as in all four of them, that you're not regulating based on the primary residence, that that is the owner, it had to be the primary residence of the owner. You're regulating, some of them are regulating based upon the number of days of occupancy. Now, I could see an argument that that gives an undue advantage to primary residents as opposed to seasonal residents, even if they do meet that requirement, or it's more difficult, I should say, for them to meet that requirement. So I, I don't, I, I would prefer, to be very honest with you, I would prefer, and I've said this from day one, if you're looking to protect the town as much as possible, I would prefer the approach, I believe that was taken, and I get my dates wrong, but I believe at the September special town meeting, where you have a zoning article that makes this allowed but subject to general bylaw regulation. And I agree with Brooke that at that September town meeting, there was also a companion general bylaw amendment, as there was that when the work group came up with their recommendations. We don't have that now at this May town meeting. That's not to say, though, that we, that the town couldn't work on a general bylaw to impose some, you know, regulations. It would be by a majority vote because it's a general bylaw, but we are where we are. And I just, I, I really hope, I really hope the town can see clear to reaching a consensus on a zoning bylaw, because that will remove, most likely, it will remove all of the issues before Judge Vey.
John.
I will also get you, I'm sorry, I will also get you a analysis of the Lake Tahoe decision. I think one of the speakers during public comment talked about how expensive it would be for the town. One of the things to keep in mind is that if you are sued for a constitutional violation and the party prevails, you have to, you know, the, the court would likely award attorney's fees for the prevailing party. I'm not sure that you would be at risk of damages, but certainly attorney's fees would be an issue if there was a successful challenge based upon the commerce clause.
John, just to clarify, when you said it's a 50% vote, the general bylaw change would have to happen through town meeting, right?
Correct. But it's only a majority vote.
Yeah. Okay. It's not a majority of the select board, it's a town meeting. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I think that's, your point on that, Brooke, is, is spot on. If 66 passed, there'll be maybe less appetite for that general bylaw vote. Yeah, so, and I think...
Or more.
Or more appetite, who knows? But there's also, and the other part, I look at it, is I know people are worried about the economy, and the economy's down. You know, I think it's hard to parcel why the economy's down. Is it down because of the bad press we got because of the blade? I love how they euphemistically call it escape, because the blade escaped. Or is it down because of that? Is it down because, you know, we, we're charging too much? Is it down because, you know, people's experience is just not worth the amount of money that we're charging anymore? And they're, and people are finding other places to go. I, I think there's a combination. And if we think we can solve it by, you know, making it unlimited and adding more, is that really, is that going to actually exasperate it? You know, I would argue it might exasperate it, but, so, so the idea, it's sort of who, how you define protection, I think, is coming from what your perspective is, and, you know, who, how you earn your living, you know? So...
Hence the difficulty of getting to a two-thirds majority, two-thirds vote. Anybody else? Or given the late-breaking news, we hold for some information from town council for next week.
And I would love him to do analysis of sort of what happened, you know, at, you know, at the recent, you know, recent hearings, you know, we were, it's being presented, you know, one was directed, and I think it's probably right. I'm not saying it isn't, but let's, you know, I would like them to give us that.
Yep. So a combination of South Lake Tahoe and Judge Vey's comments.
Judge Vey, yeah. Yeah, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Caroline, we're not, I'm not going to take public comment during this. Okay. Okay. So, Dawn, you want to come back? I think we're done with short-term rentals for this week. Anything else while Dawn makes her way back to her seat that's, that anyone feels we should add a select board comment about?
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, Tom.
No, I was, so from our, follow-up from our FinCom planning board meeting on motions the other day, there was a question about the signage. Maybe we want to include a comment just to say that that's limited? I'm kind of just thinking out loud here, because we, we get to town meeting and people, folks are thinking that those are going to be everywhere, but this is just as I read it, and I think we've talked about it with John here, the authority to, to allow that to change, to put that in, in the bylaw.
So you're talking about the lit speed, speed indicator signs? The, the change in the bylaw that would allow us to have you're driving this fast light-up signs in various locations. Right now, they're only allowed on private roads. So what that proposal is, is to allow them on public roads. And so, Tom, I think I'm hearing you say that we, we might want to indicate in a comment that the board is not interested in a proliferation of these, in that, but that we make them available where needed, kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, based on, based on conditions, but, but they're not going to be on every corner downtown.
Yeah. Any suggestions on how to word that, other than what just mumbled out of my mouth?
And mine.
That was perfect. The mumbling was perfect.
Okay. So, Tom, you want to try to craft a comment?
And I'll, I'll bring it, I'll send it. Okay.
Yep, for next week.
Yep.
So you have a moment to work on the wording. Anywhere, anything else in the warrant that warrants select board comment? Awful quiet. Okay. So we'll go back over it again next week. Okay. All right. Any committee reports?
We had, we didn't have a coast of resiliency meeting, but we had a coast of resiliency, a couple, what would we call them, workshops about the Easy Street, this three choices on the Easy Street. We had it here at our select board meeting last week, and then we had the public. I attended the first one in the morning, and there were probably 15 or 20 people approximately there. I don't know how many there at night. I think it could, I think we were trying to do it a little too quickly. I think, you know, they went about, and it was supposed to be an hour, they went an hour fifteen or so. It could have been an hour and a half, hour 45, pretty easily, I think. And it's, this is another one that's difficult. I, I think the choices that we're facing, you know, are, are very, are very much different than what we're used to. It's, you know, we'll be, you know, the focus of the downtown, when we do this, will be on vehicles. And, you know, you'll be looking up at the vehicles like this, or you'll be looking up like this. You know, as you walk along the sidewalk, you'll be looking, you know, you'll be alongside a six-foot wall with cars and trucks on it. And so I think, you know, I think that was rather severe for, you know, people to think about. And it's, you know, it's got me thinking, do we have, is there another way to tackle this? It made me also think about, you know, because we don't, there's a lot of different aspects to it, but it makes, it makes me wonder, is there another way to do it? Should, you know, we need to give direction to the property owners because, you know, otherwise they're going to be six feet down and, you know, we're supposed to be, we're going to have pumps and things, but if the pumps don't work, you know, if the top power goes out and the pumps aren't working, all of those are going to be completely flooded and ruined. And so, you know, it's sort of, I think we're, we're at about 30% design. I think this, you know, coast of resiliency group hasn't looked at it yet. I think that we really need to look at it a little more, but I, you know, I think we're heading the right direction. We're doing the work that a lot of communities are, aren't even started on yet. So I, you know, I feel good about that. I did recently read from Charleston, South Carolina, had what they were calling the Dutch Dialogues, and they were working with, you know, some of the same things that we're dealing with. And some of the things that they had kind of made a key part of theirs, we are too, but it had one whole section was talking about how they're dealing with the higher elevation properties first, so to, and they're not just dealing with them, like they're dealing with them pretty, like they're putting cisterns underneath the roads, and they're diverting the water, you know, back into other swales and back into other ponds rather than the low areas. And they're looking at it as a way to save money and not need as many pumps and not need as much work down below, which kind of rang true to me. And there was a couple other things, like if you don't, one of, I read a good saying in there was, if you're not careful, if you don't know where you're heading, you might end up there, it was something like that. But it was really good. You might, if you keep going the right direction you're going, you may end up there. And it's like, well, yeah, is that where you want to be? It made me think about things like, you know, should the steamship really be, you know, where it is now? Or is there any way to move it where it's closer to higher ground and closer to where the cars and the trucks have to go? Having every vehicle have to go in and out of the downtown, especially as we, you know, we love our cars and we aren't seeming to, you know, to put a limitation on any of that. You know, I think we have to start thinking about plant, planning and thinking about vehicles, capacity, road capacity, the, we're going to lose 20, 40 miles of roads. We're also going to lose all those, all the parking along those roads at certain times a day, and then eventually permanently, and we're going to lose the parking in the driveways in those areas, like Brant Point, et cetera. So while we're, while that's happening, we're like building up the supply of, for cars. And we're, and we're trying to figure out how to put more cars out here. We're building multi-million dollar buildings to store cars. So we aren't going in the direction we need to go to kind of deal with what I, you know, what I think is coming, or what we all think is coming. We're actually going the other way. And I, and so I think at some point, we have to decide, is that the, the direction we want to go? And, and is there another, and so I hope that we, you know, sort of take a big, you know, we aren't myopic. I hope we, you know, take a big picture view of this and, you know, and get some of those things involved, because, you know, some, anyway, and I think there are, because I think there are ways to make some of these changes, but it may mean that we just can't, you know, all drive around downtown in trucks and cars. We might have to do it differently. Downtown might have to be raised up and be, you know, and, and be more pedestrian in other areas. I just think that we have to start really kind of what is, what's, you know, we're doing the planning and the visioning, what is the vision we want in 20, 40, 70 years? You know, like, do we want, and, and let's, and then start making choices, there are choices, because people think that something's being taken away, but if you're actually retaining what makes Nantucket so special, or actually improving it, we're not taking anything away at all, we're making it better. So I, I think that hopefully, you know, over the, I think maybe the timing is good. We've got, you know, we've got the master plan going on, and we've got, you know, these planning for various areas, and maybe we can pull it all together and have some serious conversations about some of the limitations, some of the things that we really have to get a handle on. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Matt, you may finally get your gondola.
That's what I'm hoping. What's our gondola? And it's sort of, people think that's a, you know, kind of, I think I'm joking, but I'm kind of not. I'm kind of not, like, what is it? What is it that we can do to move people around the island, you know, that's quick and that they love and that takes like half the traffic away? Is there, you know, and they, there might be a way to do that.
It may not be the gondola you envisioned, but more like Venice.
Yeah, it might be Venice in areas. It might be, like, it could be boardwalks and, and golf carts. You know, people in Brant Point eventually might, you know, they may park their cars or have the cars parked in a certain higher area, and all get access, and the public might access down there with golf carts. Who knows? Like, but I don't think it's going to be, you know, in the places that were, that were, that were marshes are not, you know, are we going to raise those five feet? You know, because the water's going to come up underneath anyway. So I just think it's, we've got some big things to kind of think through, but, and we've had some, we've been fortunate, we've had like, you know, some of these colleges come and, and do, you know, some visioning and some thought processes for various areas. And I think that they've got some really good, sort of these big picture ideas that we need to think about. I sent, last thing, I sent Alfie Sanford a number of years ago, did a, he did a plan that had, he built a new marina, and this is just a conceptual, and it seems crazy, it seemed crazy at the time, but he was going to build a marina at like the end of the bulkhead and have another marina. And so the boats would have a half-hour quicker trip to the island, and he was going to have a road through the jetties into town, or, you know, and one, one version, he had a tunnel. Good luck. But I think that the idea, you know, like he, it was just big picture thinking of how do you make, you know, how do you add more capacity to the boating thing? How do you make the steamship quicker and, you know, and get the vehicles out of the downtown and make the downtown better? And he, you know, he had that 20, 30 years ago. He updated it when we were talking about Wilkes Square. But I think that we need a little more of that kind of brainstorming, I think, to come up with what we need to do. So...
Yeah. So I was thinking after my comment last week that it felt depressing. Listening to you, Matt, I think it is really about all of us starting to understand that what we're used to is not what we're going to have 10, 20, 30 years from now. And so really starting to think about what are we willing to sacrifice, adapt, change, accept in terms of our, the experience, the way we experience life on Nantucket today versus what we will, because, you know, we accept that it's, the water's coming, right? Then we have to adjust our expectations for life here. And that's, I think, to me, the hardest thing, is looking at those schematics and saying, whoa, I'm not ready for that. Maybe those aren't the exact right answer, but really mentally preparing for how different things are going to have to be is going to be really important. Tom?
Yeah, Affordable Housing Trust, our housing director, Chrissy Ferentzela, is coming back from tourney leave on March 31st, and just wanted to say what a terrific job Tracy, Rachel Ellis, and our new real estate specialist, Bob, have done in her absence and all the transactions and work that has needed to be done while she's been out.
Thanks, Tom. You pivoted, you changed the subject on me real quick. Anybody else? Okay. Who wants to go home?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody out there for listening. Have a good night.